So, let's get ready for our LCAP and ESBC presentation.
Good morning, President Williams, members of the board.
Good morning.
Executive staff and members of the community. Before we proceed with the second day of our presentation for the Local Control and Accountability Plan, our LCAP, I just wanted to acknowledge again the feedback and all the thoughts that were expressed by our parents in the previous presentation. The CAC has become an increasingly important part of our LCAP planning process, in fact, and has contributed immensely to a lot of the information that you received from us yesterday and also what you'll receive from us today. So, I want to make sure we acknowledge all of the thoughts and ideas that they presented. To kick-start our conversation, I want us to return to yesterday's conversation and where we ended off. Yesterday, we completed by talking about the concept of readiness and preparing our students for the next level, whether that's preparing our preschool students for kindergarten, preparing our elementary students for middle school, preparing our middle school students for high school, and ultimately preparing our students for post-secondary opportunities, particularly in this case, for college. And we talked about some of the metrics that we examine closely to try to ascertain how we're doing in preparing our students for post-secondary opportunities. And we've seen that over the past several years, the district has increased participation in advanced placement courses, we've increased our graduation rate, we've increased our A through G completion rate, which shows minimum eligibility for college, and in fact, accomplished that target of 60%, which is a very aggressive target that we've set out for our district and is an important benchmark throughout the state of California. So, when we look at it in totality, what do we see in high school? What we're seeing is more students graduating, which means a larger pool of students, and a larger pool of those students who are prepared for college as measured by the A through G requirements. Now, there are other metrics that we look at that help to further elucidate how the district has been performing with students, and I think it matches most of this information that we discussed yesterday. One of those is asking ourselves if our students are meeting the A through G requirements, what percentage of our 12th graders are ready for entry into the California State University system? So, in this particular case, what we're measuring is the percentage of 12th graders who meet the minimum CSU index score. In other words, the minimum cutoff score that all CSU campuses use to determine whether a student is eligible for admission at the CSU system. So, it helps us determine how well we're preparing our students for a four-year university. Now, even if they meet eligibility, they can determine their course of action from that point forward, they can still go to a two-year college, they can go to the world of work, they can go to the military, but what we do want to try to understand is how well we're preparing our students for a four-year experience. And what you're seeing in this particular line graph is that 60% of our 12th graders 2019-20 are meeting the minimum CSU index score. That's a 2 percentage point increase from the previous year and a 4 percentage point increase from the year prior to that. And in fact, when we go back to 2014-15, we're seeing steady growth over the past six years. The 2 percentage point increase in this particular metric helps us reach the target that we've set out for ourselves in the LCAP, and we've reached that target throughout the entire duration of our plan. So, again, this is another encouraging sign for us, and you'll note that the 60% here with the CSU index readiness matches the 60% that we've hit with the A through G requirement. So, we're seeing some parity here in terms of how well we're preparing our students. Just as we did with all of the data yesterday, we're going to break the overall numbers down by first ethnicity and then other subgroups. So, here, we're looking at ethnicity and we're seeing, again, some gains. Particularly, I want to point out, performance for African-American students and for Hispanics. So, African-American students in 2019, they're at 49%. That's a 5 percentage point increase from the previous year and a 9 percentage point increase from the year prior to that. And you could see a pretty rapid growth amongst students in this particular subgroup stretching all the way back to 2015. So, in fact, between 2015 and 2019, we're seeing a 19 percentage point gain from 30% to 49%. Similarly, with our Hispanic subgroup, we're seeing at 2019, they've exceeded the 50% threshold. They're at 52% this year. That's a 4 percentage point increase from the previous year, and going all the way back to 2015, we're seeing them grow 33 percentage points. So, again, a pretty substantial increase for the subgroups that have historically struggled. Here as well, we see a pretty rapid increase for our Pacific Islander subgroup. This particular subgroup, we saw in other cases, had some mixed results, but in totality, when we look at the CSU readiness for Pacific Islanders, we're seeing them at 59% this year, which is a 13 percentage point increase from the year prior to that. Now, again, remember, as we discussed yesterday, this subgroup is relatively small, so increases or decreases in small numbers for this subgroup can wildly swing the percentages. So, we want to make sure that we pay attention to that, whether the news is positive or negative. But nonetheless, I think it's really encouraging to see them increase. And because the white subgroup has more or less stayed level from the previous year, we're effectively closing the achievement or narrowing the achievement gap with these subgroups. Now, moving forward, I'll give a moment just to take a look at other subgroups here. Again, we're breaking things down by gender, by English learner and RFPAP students, by homeless foster youth, by our low-income students, and also by our special education So, with these six subgroups, for example, five of the six saw gains. There was a decline amongst our homeless foster youth students from 44% to 40%, but across the other subgroups, we see some increases, including a 4 percentage point increase among our low socioeconomic students, a 2 percentage point increase among our special education students, and a 4 percentage point increase among our EL and RFPAP students. And with that particular subgroup, they've gained every single year since 2015, so that between that year and this year, they've grown by 23 percentage points.
Robert, can I just highlight something from yesterday that you just alluded to?
Sure.
So, it is interesting and sort of perplexing. The conversation we had about high school readiness yesterday is either flatter or, you know, in some cases, not growing compared to, with the exception of our homeless foster youth here, there's growth in all of our subgroups and across all ethnic and racial groups. So, again, it just behooves us to take that deeper dive as to both the indicators that we're using for high school readiness, but what's going on, right? Because, you know, in some cases here, we're exceeding, you know, college readiness, yet for the same group, for high school readiness, we're not doing as well.
We may have our R too high, as you said, as an indicator. Another factor is our high schools have really doubled down in all the supports and interventions and being very proactive.
Right.
So, you're right, we need to look at all of it.
Right. And if that's the case, right, that high schools are, for whatever reason, just outpacing where our expectations were, how do then we bring that down to the middle school and elementary school level? So, I just want to highlight that for us because, you know, we were all sort of engaged in that conversation, whether it was attendance and/or GPAs, and then yet here, by all indicators, we're going up, right, in terms of our college readiness.
Yeah, that was a good point that was brought up yesterday in terms of the math collaborative and how that was focused on our high schools and how can we translate the same concepts to the middle school and even earlier than that?
Right.
And I think that is what it's raising for us, because if we're seeing some of these metrics move at this level or at this degree at this particular point, what are some of those lessons learned that we can then translate in other areas so that we can continue that pipeline? Another one that kind of, I wouldn't say perplexing, but it does create some complexities, is when we look at college enrollment.
Right.
So, what we've just looked at here with CSU readiness is eligibility. So, the district has been increasingly preparing students for eligibility. How that translates to college enrollment is another question entirely, but is also an important consideration for us. We're seeing here, actually, the district is above the national average and, in fact, above the state average as well as it relates to college enrollment. 70% of our graduates are enrolled in college immediately after high school, as is shown here, but it's relatively flat. You're not seeing any wild swings in terms of college enrollment data for us, and even though we've seen some pretty rapid growth in eligibility, so we've actually had more students that are eligible for college but may or may not be taking advantage of that opportunity, why that's the case, I think, is one for us to continue to explore. There are a whole host of different reasons, including the economy's condition, which can obviously change the dynamics for an individual student's decision as to what to do after they graduate from our high school. But what is also interesting here is this reflects college enrollment immediately after high school. Some of our students wait either a semester or even a year before taking full advantage of their college opportunities. So, we have to think about that. This should also be viewed alongside all of the other indicators that we look at. So, the A through G requirements, the CSU requirements, our AP enrollment, if they're moving in a particular direction, how do we translate those to, you know, what we see in terms of college enrollment? Those are some really important questions, I think, that this raises for us as a school system.
Robert, it's a small thing, but I would be interested to, and what percentage of our high school graduates go immediately into the military?
Yes.
Because that is an area where they can be trained for a lifelong endeavor, and we probably ought to consider that.
We can get to that data. It's smaller than you would think, but we can get it to.
And Robert, I've got a few questions along this line. I'm very proud of what we're seeing in terms of our students, the mobility of our students entering college, but as a district, we have two stated objectives. One is preparing students for college, and the other is preparing students for work.
Right.
With respect to the former, the college preparation, beyond admissions, we need to also look at retention in college and graduation rates as well to get a better measure. The other piece, and I know how difficult it is to look at work and try to follow up, but since that's one of our stated objectives for this district, we need to find a way to measure that, maybe a sampling of students that we can track periodically to see how these students are doing in the world of work or in the military, who are advancing to the military. But again, we do have those two stated objectives for our district, and it would be nice to be able to look at how we are doing and preparing our students for the world of work.
We will be able to get some of that data under the new proposed data system by our governor.
Okay.
So, that's in the development as we speak. So, for the first time, we will be able to have data on both college, and we can get you the data on the completion, because we have that through the National Clearinghouse, but we can also get the career part, which we've never had before. So, under this new data system, it will take a while, but we can get some.
Okay.
So, on a broader, you know, regional statewide issue.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, Dr. Williams, and it sort of goes to my previous point, the -- I'm going to try to use a different word, not perplexing, Robert. It's, I mean, I think the wrapping our heads around is sort of intuitive, too, because one could very easily infer, look, if one of our stated goals is eliminating our opportunity gap, more Latinos and African-Americans are college-ready, you know, if they're not enrolling in college, whether that's immediately after high school or at some point, you know, and I jumped ahead a slide here, Robert, our low-income students, you know, are both overrepresented from our African-American and Latinx subgroups, but also that's one of the other subgroups that is experiencing declining college enrollment.
Yeah.
Right? So, whether that's a deduction or we can infer that clearly financial and economic considerations are impacting the enrollment here, in addition to, again, anything else that we can deduce and infer. So, it is counterintuitive that we are increasing Latinx and African-American and other students of color's CSU eligibility, yet they're not enrolling in colleges, right, in addition to being retained in the persistence rates.
Yeah.
At the college level, so.
And that's an interesting observation that Dr. Benitez has just made. Is there any way that we can, for our students who are, who meet the requirements but are not attending college, is there a way to factor that information out in terms of why they're not moving forward in it?
We would have to send surveys out to that particular group.
Well, you bring up a good point, and it's one we've grappled with, with our partners locally with CSULB and LBCC, because they're also looking at the same data that we are since we're among their biggest feeders, and they're grappling with some of the same things. How do we convert these students that are now more ready and prepared to go on to college? And how do we, how do they attract our students? And so, these issues are being raised, including financial considerations for many of our students is a really big and significant factor that we know is always kind of in existence. The documentation aspect of going to college is also one that I think we're contending with in part. So, these are some really challenging issues for us to grapple with, and broader than, a much broader and richer conversation we've had than previously.
Yeah, that could be very helpful. I'm sorry, Megan, go ahead.
I was going to say, that was, that was going to be my observation, is the work of a partnership in this respect, in that I think of all of these kids as my kids, and I want to know how they're doing and why they're going to school and understanding that our charge is a K-12 and for some, a K-12 and beyond. And so, as we innovate around a college promise to do more, bigger, exciting things and innovating, that as we look at this with a little bit of a decline before we see that again next year, maybe it's a time to go back and double down on the basics of what the intention was, which is to get kids there. And so, maybe we spend a year or two doing a little more hand-holding and really strategizing with our partners at LBCC and CSULB to say, we have these students ready, they are technically adults, they are now technically yours, we'd like to hand them over, how do we fine-tune the process by which we're doing that to make sure that some kids aren't falling through the cracks who have the intention of going and just need a little support along the way?
That's true.
I know that's how all of this started back with seamless education in the 90s, and that was the intent of the promise. And while we do that well and we do the newer things well, perhaps spending a little time, now that we have a reminder, that that basic piece that I think some of us take for granted, that our students and families have heard it so much that they just do it, and the reality on the ground might be a little bit different these days in light of times around documentation, around food insecurity or housing insecurity for some of these students who now are told to be adults.
Right.
So, that might be something we want to look at in terms of collaborating with our partners and take a breath and step back and look at that data and say, what are we doing in that end of senior year, in that summer, to make sure that we're supporting kids as best we can to get them where they intend to go and don't, you know, accidentally fall through the cracks?
Right.
Yeah, I think one of the clear examples we can look at is we have, in terms of the college promise and the community colleges, that tuition is paid for. It's not the same for the CSU. So, looking at the fact that the city college folks will fund that tuition, the kids don't have to come up with the money for that. Are we seeing more kids going to the community college because of that rather than going to Long Beach?
No, you'll see in a minute, the data.
We got data that tells us something different?
Yeah, in fact, maybe we should bring it up now. For the first time in the district's history, we actually had a larger proportion of our college enrollees going to four-year university as opposed to a two-year university.
So, Chris, I'm going to ask you for something. Let's, this is a big one, this is a big one. And because this at least gets us on a path to being proactive, Board Member Kirk. So, let's look at our African-American, you know, growth was 5% in terms of college readiness, yet African-American enrollment dropped by 7%. So, from a certain perspective, we're actually, you know, it's diminishing returns on our end, because if we're improving college readiness, but yet enrollments are dropping by more than what we're improving. I mean, if we did a cost-benefit analysis, I mean, we're undermining, and I'm not saying we as a district, but in some ways, we're undermining our own efforts if, for whatever reason, those students are not then enrolling in university. So, for African-Americans, to me, it's huge, right? A 5% increase in CSU eligibility, yet a 7% decrease in enrollment for 12% of our students.
Right, and we need to bring forth all the data for you and show you the number who go that second semester, because under the new data from the state, it's actually 70% of our African-Americans are going to college, and some of the data here may not capture the ones that are going to privates and so on.
Right.
But the state has captured that data for the first time. But what we need to do for you is to show you all the data, this is, you know, first semester data as well as second semester data, and then where they're going and why they're going.
Right.
Because this change here, even though we have our students have two years of free college, you can see a drastic change over the period of time that our kids are choosing, and so where are they going?
That's right.
So, we do have a lot of students who leave our state, who are getting, you know, full rides and others, you know, to HBCs and other universities. So, we need to have a bigger, like you said, deeper dive in all this data points.
And I know you, I know some folks don't like it when I say it this way, and I'm a CSULB employee by day. Something is off with Long Beach Promise 2.0, because there are only some majors that, particularly for our students of color, right, that we, that the promise applies to. I mean, we had this conversation a few months ago.
Right.
There's a bottleneck, right, in terms of the community college transfer programs that are covered by 2.0, and then it doesn't cover impacted programs on our, on our campus.
Right, it closed the door for incoming freshmen coming directly from our system. And I know we did, we had a long conversation trying to flesh if that was actually true.
Yeah.
Was that new, because our kids hadn't experienced that before, and it seems to have borne out that that is true, and so maybe revisiting that. I think another piece important to revisit, because we have students who potentially take a semester or a year off for multiple reasons, is, you know, working with our partners at Long Beach City College, if their intention was to pay for two years of school, is there a possibility that they, that it not be when they directly head there from June to September or June to August? Is it possible that if it's within the window of a year, that they still get their two years, but it starts in January, it starts the following fall? And that's, I think, a conversation we should probably start to explore with our partners and seeing, I mean, I know of three students from the graduating class last year who had to go to work and chose intentionally to defer enrollment, and now they don't get their two years.
Correct.
So, it compounds the problem of they needed to go to work to earn money, and now they don't even, they're not eligible for that piece of the promise. So, again, I think going back to the basics of what the intentions were.
Right, we need to revisit all these issues, because you have a, one time was 5% of our kids were deferring of our graduates, which is a lot, I mean, that's about 300 kids. So, we need to look at that, because then it compounds that issue of completion and everything if you can't pay. So, I'll call a meeting with our partners and revisit these issues, because it's, and you'll hear later in the presentation about the project labor agreement, how if we go forth with that, we want to tie that to the promise, but on the career part, because nobody else is doing that, to be very honest with you. So, but these are all good discussions.
Yeah, these are great points, and I'll just summarize what the board has given us as feedback in this way. One is, this is where, this is the part of the presentation where our results are more heavily influenced by outside factors and other institutions, right? Because we don't have college in our school district. So, we're at the mercy of other institutions doing something similar to what we're trying to do in order to support our students, and it really, it's incumbent upon us to continue to work with our collaborators in order to ensure that our goals and incentives are aligned.
Well, Robert, speaking of outside forces as well, you know, there's a lot of publicity now, is a college education really worth it? And what do the costs involve? College debt is a big thing in the news media, and our young people are aware of that, so that figures in as well.
Yeah, yeah, so we're contending with a lot of these issues that are, to some degree, beyond our control.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is a good discussion, and to borrow one of your phrases, Dr. Benitez, if we take--
Borrow them all, crackhead.
Thank you. If we take a deeper dive into, you know, what is preventing these college-prepared students to attend college, then we know what we're up against, then we know how, you know, to help them in actually enrolling and attending college. It seems to me, you know, two years of free tuition at Long Beach City College is a fabulous gift, and if we can, you know, collaborate with them to provide that for the students that defer their enrollment, even if it was a compromise, even if it was, here are your two years, if you choose not to enroll or attend for the first semester and you enroll in the second semester, then you have a year and a half. Or if you take a year, then you, you know, if they get a calendar, two years of free tuition, they might not be able to take advantage of it right away, but at least they know that that's available to them when they can get there. That would be better than the current situation of if you don't go right out of high school, then it's not available to you at all. But I think we should take a look at what is preventing those students from going. The only way to do that is to ask them, so survey or whatever, but we have to collect that information so we know what we're up against, so we know how to best serve those students.
And it's compounded, Board Member crackhead, because, and I keep saying this as well, like, let's say we had a 20% increase in our A through G completion rate, would Cal State Long Beach still guarantee admission? I mean, the superintendent keeps saying that, Cal State Long Beach president says yes.
Yes.
However, if the doorway is going to be small, you know, not as big, because there's only going to be five majors that we can get into, and one, you know, major through transfer at Long Beach City College, then it's a moot conversation, right? Because we can increase our college readiness, but if our local institution, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, I'm just saying, there's a scenario where we'll outgrow capacity.
That we're making promises we can't keep.
Well, and that's, that was my comment, that then it's a false promise, particularly for students of color, right?
Right.
If that's the product that we're selling, that we're going to do right by our students of color, and our partner institutions, and again, they have their reasons, right, you know, are not going to uphold that promise, then it's a different conversation that we have, and, you know, rightly so. We look at the private, you know, universities, other universities, because we can do right by students of color, we can have 100% A through G completion rate, but if our students are going to compete with a higher eligibility index, and LBCC is not going to have--
only going to be five majors that we can get into, and one, you know, major through transfer at Long Beach Community, at Long Beach City College, then it's a moot conversation, right? Because we can increase our college readiness, but if our local institution, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, I'm just saying, there's a scenario where we'll outgrow capacity.
That we're making promises we can't keep.
Well, and that's, that was my comment, that then it's a false promise particularly for students of color, right? If that's the product that we're selling, that we're gonna do right by our students of color, and our partner institutions, and again, they have their reasons, right, you know, are not gonna uphold that promise, then it's a different conversation that we have. And, you know, rightly so. We look at the private, you know, universities, other universities, because we can do right by students of color, we can have 100% A through G completion rate, but if our students are gonna compete with a higher eligibility index, and LBCC is not going to have the ability to transfer students, and then it's a different conversation, right? Not to throw anyone under the bus, but it's a different promise that we're quote-unquote selling.
Yeah, the bus is getting close, though.
Well, I work for one of those institutions, so I'm good with having that conversation.
Right, and there, there should be, and I believe that there is, enough room for everybody. This is a both-and situation. This should be, they are going to two-year colleges and four-year colleges.
That's right.
Absolutely.
I don't think we want anyone competing for our students because we don't want anybody competing for our students. We wanna make sure there are seats for everybody, the both-and of this. And really, again, working with partnerships and Superintendent, I'll do anything I can, and go anywhere you need me to go, talk to anybody in terms of having those conversations and making sure it is a both-and, especially for the students who this promise is a lifeline. We promised this lifeline in second grade, in third grade, in fourth grade, we make them sign something and take them to places. And we need to be able to say that to the fourth graders who do that this year, that seat is still there, and that space is still there. So, I really am committed to making sure that our promise is as strong and robust and innovative as ever, and whatever I can do and we can do to support that work.
Appreciate the board. This is a very nuanced conversation, and I think we're beginning to tread on new territory here. The superintendent alluded to it, but it's, the state overall is kind of catching up to this conversation around college-going rates and tracking the data for the first time. So, we're, I'm glad that we're ahead of the game by starting to consider some of the really complex nuances of the issue. Something that the board did mention that this particular slide will highlight is the decrease in enrollment for particularly our African-American students from 73% to 66% year to year. So, some of our more vulnerable subgroups do end up bearing the brunt of some of the declines when the times get really difficult. And it's one of those things that we have to continue to remind ourselves of in terms of closing the achievement gap. And then we see some of the college enrollment data broken out by subgroup here as well. One really great celebration here is our special education students. So, an increase from 48% to 61% in terms of college enrollment in the fall immediately after high school.
Robert, can I ask a quick question? We don't need to go into too much detail because I'll ask Dr. Brown and Dr. Heenan to dive into that at another time.
Sure.
In terms of when we do a classification for special education, is that all special education students with an IEP? Are that, is that number the N, again, going back to the importance of the N? Is that students who we know are on diplomas, who are seeking diplomas? Is that students who we know might not have the capacity to, with even as many supports as we could give them, achieve a diploma and get a certificate? Is that whole number altogether? So, just that information, again, when we break those out, would be helpful to know.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point. Well, I'll make sure to make another of that.
Robert, so our non-low-income students, that kind of diffuses the income. Our non-low-income students are experiencing drastic-
Which you have to remember, is there's also that group that's just above that poverty level.
Right. Maybe the folks that aren't getting the financial aid packages.
Oh, that's right, yeah. That, we don't know, for example, we don't know the kind of financial aid packages the students get necessarily, according to the data, so-
It would be easy to look at eligibility and see if that's where we're experiencing the decline. Wow, 8%.
Okay, so, this count here represents data from the state. So, the previous count comes from the National Student Clearinghouse. This one comes from the state. And like I mentioned, the state is now beginning to track this a little bit more closely and is part of the LCAP for all school districts in the, in the state of California. So, that affords us the opportunity to compare ourselves with others. And as we can see here with the college-going rate, this is 2017-18, the district outperformed both the county and the state against the state average by a magnitude of seven percentage points. So, that's a positive indicator for us.
And Robert, before you go on, Dr. Benitez, you asked a question yesterday about the Long Beach Unified compared to the districts that have the default for A through G. So, two of the districts who have had the default for A through G, the longest are San Jose, which is the longest, it's been about 20 years, and LAUSD. So, San Jose's A through G rate is 52%. Their grad rate is at 90%, which is about 5% higher than ours. And their college-going rate is exactly the same as ours. LA Unified, their graduation rate is lower, it's 77%. Their A through G rate is 62%, and their college-going rate is 51%.
Wow.
So, so, there's a great example of what we talked about, the different ways to get to the top of the mountain, so to speak. But those two districts are the, two districts who have had A through G. And again, for those who don't know what that means, is that in the 11th grade, you have to, what they say, opt out of A through G because you didn't make up a C, I mean, a D in a class, so.
What did you say, San Jose, 52? Was there-
Their A through G rate was 52%.
And private San Jose.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And A through G is the minimum course requirement to be eligible to go to CSU or UC?
UC, and some private.
You know, as we compare ourselves to some of the other districts, I wonder, I don't know what the composition of the other districts are in terms of having a kind of program like we have in the college promise here, and how much that program impacts that data for us as opposed to some of the other districts.
That's a great, that's a great point. Actually, Los Angeles has a promise as well, but it's not as robust as ours. In fact, it's had, it's experienced some rocky times of late. And then there are a few others that are part of our consortium when we talk about our link learning partners, where they also have some form of a promise. But we have the unique advantage, I think, here in our, in our community in that we have one, one city college and one CSU. In other communities, for example Fresno, they will have multiple community colleges and multiple CSUs. And what the dynamic that that creates is they are competing against one another when they come to the table. And in many respects, they don't even want to come to the table together because they're all competing for the same high school students. So, so, from our vantage point, there is, we can look at it as an advantage or a disadvantage, but I think it's an opportunity for us. The fact that we have partners that can come to the table and not be competing against one another necessarily and have this kind of cannibalizing effect is, is a positive for us that I think we've tried to play into.
Do Santa Ana and Fullerton have that?
Santa Ana has a great partnership with Santa Ana College, and the data shows that a vast majority of their students go to the two-year, and they do have some partnerships with Fullerton. But nobody has as deep and robust as we do. People have it, well, it will be one versus another, so.
So, at this stage, I'll turn it over now to my colleague, Dr. Kristi Kael, and she'll be talking about the other priority areas for our-
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning.
Morning.
So, nice to see you again. We are going to be shifting from achievement and access to parent involvement, pupil engagement, and school climate. And specifically, we'll be looking at attendance rates, chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, and then core survey results. It was really wonderful to hear the qualitative data this morning from the CAC, capturing the voices of students and parents and staff is really important. So, we'll spend a little bit of time kind of unpacking the quantitative data that we have that gives some, gives some voice to those folks. But I'm gonna start first with attendance. So, I'm gonna state the obvious, the, our attendance rate dropped a little bit in last year. And it's interesting, if you, if you look at attendance rates over the months of the year, and you also look at Long Beach precipitation rates, you will see a correlation, a really high correlation. So, in other words, in January, we had a 6.42 precipitation rate, that's a lot of rain. February, five inches, March, two. And in those months, our attendance rates dropped down to 94. So, blame it on the rain, right? To quote, who am I quoting?
Milli Vanilli.
Yeah, Milli Vanilli, oh, boy. That was not a planned comment.
Off the cuff, Dr. Kael.
Off the cuff, sorry about that.
See, you're easing right into it.
And, but I do wanna, I wanna come back to a point, a point related to attendance and related to a question you asked earlier, Dr. Benitez, around the CSU readiness versus high school readiness. And attendance is one of the factors. So, that, you can miss school and still be, become CSU-ready, but not true for high school readiness, and then also suspension. So, we will talk about that in a little bit more in just a minute. So, as far as chronic absenteeism, it shouldn't surprise us when we see our attendance rates come up a little bit, that our chronic absenteeism rate increased by 2%. That holds true across elementary, middle, and high school. So, it's the same across the board. It's not like we saw it in any one particular place.
Kristi, can, is that, can we nail that down to any particular subgroup, let's say, homeless or-
So, we're gonna, I'm gonna show you those groups, and just give me one more minute for a comparison point here.
What constitutes chronic absenteeism, Dr. Kael?
So, chronic absenteeism is when we drop below 96. So, it's 10, they miss 10 or more. Yeah, okay. So, looking at our data, our core comparison group, they were at 20%, and they went up by 3%. So, this is not just something that's happened here, and it makes sense because regionally, if these things are related to the really interesting weather patterns we had last year, we would expect to see that across this, the region here, and LA saw the same sort of results as we did. So, going to your question, Dr. Williams, we're gonna look at ethnicity. So, here's what you see by ethnicity. You see every single subgroup is up by 1 to 3%. So, while, yes, we have, you know, a couple of subgroups up a little bit higher than others, we're seeing it up across the board, which tells us that it isn't happening in any one particular place. In looking at the same data now by our other subgroups, again, you see a 2 to 3 increase across those groups. So, it's interesting. I don't know that we can provide any real explanations. I know the schools that I was working with last year spent a lot of time on this metric, and just, it's something we didn't hit. So, it's something we'll have to probably just pay some more attention to and kind of go back to the drawing board around. So, I'm gonna shift now to suspensions. Our suspension rate was up almost 1%. And I want to remind you that this is the unduplicated rate. So, this means the percent of students who were suspended one time or more. So, it doesn't count the number of suspensions, but the number of students who were suspended. Because in actuality, the number of suspensions went down, so, but again, our suspension rate went up because we calculate suspension rate by students. So, what I can tell you is that the rate did go down in elementary, so we reduced the number of elementary suspensions from, to 1.3%. And high school went up just a little tiny bit, 3.7 to 3.8. It was middle school where we saw the largest increase in suspensions, so from 6.5 to 7.1. For comparison purposes, the core suspension rate came in at 5.1, also seeing an increase in suspension rate across core districts. So, that's something we can take a look at and unpack and have conversations internally. I know our principals probably have a lot of perspectives about the kinds of things they were, that were challenging for them last year.
So, more students were suspended, but not as many times, basically?
Right, so the, our suspensions went down, the number of suspensions on the record, but the number of students who have one or more suspensions, which goes back to that high school readiness because we saw this happening in middle school, if that makes sense. So, all the data kind of comes together around that. All right. So, in looking at it by ethnicity, this is where we do see some differences. So, we'll see, we see some flatness, and then we see increases in our African-American and Hispanic subgroup. So, a little bit of an upward tick there. So, that's, again, something that we need to probably unpack together.
And, yeah, just to highlight here, I think it's very clear that our African-American suspension rate is, in some cases, five to 10 times higher than all other racial, ethnic groups, and it went slightly up, right?
Yes, it did. When we look by subgroup, we're seeing, you know, there's some interesting data there. We see a slight drop in homeless foster and a drop in our special education group, which is good news, and then kind of flat every place else. So, that gives us some good information. I think that's a positive trend for special ed. And then, you know, this, you saw this slide last year, but just to make sure we reframe this, this idea that when we reframe our suspension rate, this is the number of students who were never suspended. And we don't have the Cambodian number on there, but that is also 98%. So, the majority of our students have never been suspended. So, I'm gonna shift now to parent involvement and specifically the core survey data, looking at the family survey.
Just one quick comment, Dr. Kael.
Sure, let me back up.
So, I think, Dr. Baker, you and I have talked about this, it sort of highlights the importance of professional development, right, as a priority to address, you know, issues of implicit bias, right, restorative practices. So, I think that's where we can see what the potential outcomes of prioritizing in those areas are with respect to our school disciplinary actions.
Yeah, and I thought the workshop that was held just recently was an effort to get at that, yeah.
Yeah, we can give you data by school. In some cases, you might be surprised because remember, if there's a serious incident at a school, it could spike its suspension data. One event could do that, and a school could have great disciplinary practices and all kinds of great things going on, but that one incident, because of the safety of students, you could have 20 kids suspended. So, we can get you all that data, and then we know, when you have those unique instances, we can share that with you. Because it goes back to the context.
I think the other piece, and I know that there was a recent conversation with Long Beach PD, all right, is the interaction and communication. So, we've also had conversations around policies and practices, all right? So that if stuff occurs over the weekend, let's say, what are our internally procedures? Dr. Brown, we've had this conversation where if Long Beach, you know, if we're not able to do our own assessments, and then all we have to go by is a Department of Ed code, then we have, you know, exacerbated sort of the, our ability to be proactive in, in this case particularly, young boys of color, right, that are disproportionately being suspended and/or expelled in areas that sometimes we are not able to be nimble in with our own resources and practices.
The other thing that I would add is there are a number of school efforts around professional development for restorative practices. In addition, last spring, Dr. Kael and Dr. Camarino planned for the middle and K-8 schools to go through a year-long professional development experience as administrators with CCEJ around restorative practices. So, many, there are many efforts going on at the same time.
Right.
All right, so, taking a look at core survey data and focusing on the family survey, and just as a reminder, the core survey is taken by families, by students, and by staff members every spring. So, that's the data that we're looking at here. I wanted to mention, on the family survey, we get a response rate of about 20%, which is pretty good. But as far as the survey demographics, because you might be wondering, well, who are the parents that are answering this survey? So, the ethnicity of the survey takers mirrors that of the district, so that's a positive. We saw an even spread among the grade levels, so the grade levels are represented pretty evenly. And we saw an even spread on gender, so it's not like parents of boys versus girls. Where we saw maybe a little few discrepancies, so our low SES group is a little bit underrepresented on this survey. Our English learner parents are underrepresented on the survey, and students with disabilities underrepresented on the survey. So, something to keep in mind. In addition, interestingly enough, students with suspensions would be slightly underrepresented as well. So, just gives you a little context for the data. But as far as the question, I feel welcome to participate at this school, and whether or not they agree or strongly agree, we're holding steady at 94%. So, in breaking some of this data down, this is, this is, we see some trends of flatness when we look at climate of support for academic learning, knowledge and fairness of rules, sense of belonging. We saw a tiny growth in safety. And I, what I want to point out is, the safety question is, it's a, that's a pretty high bar because we asked the parents, not only the question- Because we ask the parents, not only the question, my child is safe on school grounds, but we also ask them the question, my child is safe in the neighborhood around the school. So working on those two things together with parents, I think any growth that we see in that measure is a sign of the work that we're trying to do with families and kids around the issue of safety. When we look at?
Dr. Kell, question on that. I, I think that's, I think it's really cool that we ask that. Do, do we get any data and/or feedback from parents on sort of the, the competing notions out there that stuff from the neighborhood carries over into the schools? And then from the neighborhood perspective, stuff from the schools carries out into the neighborhood? Do we, do we have any data, sense of, of, you know, the parent perspectives on? And, and again, those are not mutually exclusive, but you do have competing notions on things that we may have control over in the schools that have neighborhood?
And social media has really compounded that.
Yeah.
Certainly.
We do have data from our partners who will share with us instances around our high schools. And in some cases, they've gone down. So for example, Poly, the number of instances actually went down. Where Cabrillo, this is year-to-year comparison, they actually were flat. So we do look at that, you know, that type of data. But we don't have the survey data that you're referring to.
Okay. So moving on to some culture and climate questions. In terms of climate of support for academic learning, climate of support for academic learning consists of questions like, this school provides high-quality instruction and this school has high expectations for all students. And so we can see there's a discrepancy there in how our special education parents are responding to that, to those, in that area, excuse me. As far as knowledge and fairness of rules, that one has to do with clearly informing students about what would happen if they break a school rule or at this school, discipline is fair. So it's this idea of, do they know and is, is it being carried out fairly? And again, you can see here, a discrepancy. Our lowest, our lowest positive responding group is our African-American group. Then we also have in sense of belonging. And so sense of belonging is about, I feel welcome to participate. School staff treats me with respect. They take my concerns seriously, welcome my suggestions, respond to my needs, and are helpful. And again, we see a gap there in terms of our lowest positive responding group is the African-American subgroup. So when we kind of combine these things together, we really see that our African-American subgroup and special education parents are our lowest positive responders. So it kind of coincides with some of the other data that we've been talking about. When we look at the same data, re, from the perspective of staff members, one of the things we're gonna see, so we see climate of support for academic learning and sense of belonging are pretty much holding steady. We saw a dip in knowledge and fairness of rules, which is, in a minute, I'm gonna talk to you about the student data. And it's, it's interesting, because the students are not telling us the same thing. In the area of safety, we see a one percent dip, which kind of corresponds to that data in middle school around suspensions. So when we look at that by level in safety, we've got, the lowest response rate there is sixty-one percent for middle school. So again, some of the data is converging to kind of give us the same picture. As far as safety from the staff perspective, that has to do with how much of a problem they think harassment, fighting, disruptive behavior, conflict, or student respect is on their campus. So I'm gonna get, I want to get to the other.
Kristi, just very quickly. I'm trying to remember the name of the group who did the study. Recent study, high schools around the nation. But they showed that the level of change in schools around the nation in terms of, of student behavior becoming more problematic, racial incidents and that kind of thing around the nation, correlated with what is happening from the White House. And they made those comparisons. So I'm wondering how much of that kind of thing filters into our world here?
Well, I mean, our schools are just reflective of what's going on around them. And so I think.
I believe it was UCLA.
No, it was, it was, that might have been the study. But the one I'm referring to is an organization that tracks hate groups and they've been doing it for years.
Okay. There's also, yeah, there's also one out of UCLA that I printed a copy and it fell on the floor. So I just saw it the other day, because I haven't picked it up yet, around that idea of what's happening in high school culture around, specifically around the Trump presidency. So I know I have a link to it somewhere if anybody's interested.
Very interesting about how kids are now behaving towards one another as a result of that. And they're making those correlations.
All right. I'm going, let's talk a little bit about what our students have to say. So we're gonna start with our elementary students. And they're pretty much holding steady with the exception of knowledge and fairness of rules. So while the staff said that that one went down a couple of points, it's gone up a couple of points with our elementary students. So it's, it's interesting. As far as the kinds of questions we ask students around climate of support, we ask them, you know, do the adults work hard and do the teachers help them? And do they give students a chance to have discussions and participate in activities with one another? Do their teachers go out of their way to really provide them with help when they need it? So the questions around sense of belonging, I feel close to people at this school. I'm happy to be at this school. I feel I'm a part of this school. Teachers treat students fairly. So very parallel to those kinds of questions that we're asking parents and staff.
You know, it seems to me that the numbers for safety are lower than I'd like to see. You know, especially for elementary kids. I'd like to think that our elementary kids are feeling more safe at schools than these numbers reflect.
Agreed, agreed.
What kind of questions are?
Sure, the safety questions are, how safe do you feel at school? Do others spread rumors or lies about you? Have you ever been teased about how you look? Does anybody steal or damage your things? Does anybody ever hit or push you? So tho, those are kind of the, the elementary versions of the questions. They're very similar at secondary with a, a couple of changes. So it's not, not quite the same question that we're asking parents, right?
But they are considerable, considerably lower, right?
Right.
Twenty percent lower.
It gives me a better understanding hearing the, the questions. And that one question about teasing or, you know, bullying, that kind of thing. We know that's, you know, typical of, of children's behavior at that age level. And I think we talked about it earlier, that social media kind of, it amplifies that. It's more detrimental, because there's no escape from it. You can't escape from that type of bullying when you leave school. It follows you home. And I wonder how much that plays a part in it.
Yeah, social media has really presented us with many, many challenges.
I know you just read them, Dr. Kell, so no need to read them again. Do we differentiate between how they feel at school and/or in their neighborhood or at home?
Not on this particular question, this, this set of questions at elementary.
Would you consider adding a question about being teased on social media, like cyberbullying?
It seems like it, it could be something we could talk about. I think we're going through a, a process pretty soon about looking at these questions in general. So I think now's a good time to be thinking about what questions we want to ask. The problem is, is each time we change the questions, then we aren't gonna be able to compare the data. So that's what we, there's sometimes an ability to ask a question and pull that out of the data and still have that question analyzed. So there's some possibilities of, of some things we can do. All right. So let's talk about what this looks like when we break it down. You're, you're gonna see that our, there's a ten percent difference between our African-American and our white subgroup in the area of safety. So that's a, it's a pretty, it's pretty significant. We also see, once again, low response from our special education students as far as low positive response around their feelings of safety. We're seeing in sense of belonging, again, the highest response group is our Filipino group. When you compare that to the African-American group, again, a ten percent gap. So they, what we're seeing with the African-American subgroup mirrors what we're seeing in the parent data. So again, it's, it's, the data is kind of confirming itself. And then in addition, if you notice, when you look at the special education positive response rate, it is low across the board, no matter which of the indicators you look at. So some, some food for thought for us.
Yeah, the other piece of, of me that I would have questions around is, is that sense district-wide? Or does it also get uplifted by the racial subgroups within schools? So for instance, you, you mentioned African-American and white safety responses. I'd be curious if that's district-wide or i, is that also consistent within schools?
Oh, I see what you're asking. You're asking, school by school, do we see a large variation?
Right.
Um, I haven't looked at every school's data individually. There is gonna be some variation, but there's definitely predictable patterns. So.
So as an example, do African-American students feel the same at Wilson that they do at Jordan?
Right.
Ed, but we have that data.
We have all that data for sure. We have it, just don't have it in front of us. So we definitely can answer that question.
Be interesting as well in terms of the safety piece, to look at regions. And so Jordan and its feeder schools, is there, is there a trend there? Wilson and its feeder schools, Cabrillo and its feeder schools. Is there something potentially happening within the neighborhood or within a geographic space that might give us some ideas as well?
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to secondary students. So our secondary students, this survey was positive in three out of the four areas. So climate of support for academic learning, that went up three percent. Although these numbers are lower than elementary and we'll, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit more about that in a minute. Knowledge and fairness of rules, up eleven percent. So this is why it's sometimes confounding to look at the data when you see the students are saying, yes, we know what we need to do, and staff are saying, mm, not sure. So it is interesting. As far as sense of belonging, that increased by two percent, which you can see historically hasn't moved much. So I think we can celebrate that two percent. And then again, in safety, we see that number dip a couple of percent. So down two percent in safety. The safety questions are pretty much the same as elementary, except there is a question about sexual jokes and comments, which replaces the damaged items. So as the students get older, asking them those kinds of questions.
Kristi, this is gonna sound pretty harsh.
Okay.
But at the high, secondary level, the issue of safety and a sense of belonging is woeful. It is woeful. And that's something that we need to address, it seems to me. And I know I'm a dinosaur, but I go back to the old days when there was a homeroom at the high school level, where every day, the same students attended with the same teacher. And they bonded and they locked arms throughout the school year and the three years or four years they were in high school. Now I know that that's a heresy to suggest we go back to something like that. But it's unconscionable that we would tolerate such a low rate of feeling of safety and belonging at our secondary schools.
Yeah, and we need to also break it down by pathway for schools and by school, because you'll see differences. Because you're right, the, the data is, in some cases, they've worked really hard. So for example, at Cabrillo, they've worked really hard on the sense of belonging and it's gone up. So, so there are some really good practices taking place right now. But you're right, there's a ton of improvement for all those schools, so.
Can I add too, that every school gets a very detailed report by subgroup? They can get it by pathway at the secondary level. And so it, the, it is incorporated into their individual school goal setting that's monitored also. But they get a very detailed report with all of the questions broken out that they can use for improvement process.
So we're hoping that pathways will go a long ways toward solving this issue.
Yeah, we've actually seen that data. And so it's, it's actually, it goes back to that relationship issue that you've talked about for, for years. So if you have a group of teachers who work with these kids for four years, you build those bonds, those relationships and so on. So it's, it is a very positive. And Kristi, you may want to go to the next slide to show when you exclude certain, now, the last one. So I think the, no, no, the next slide? Where's this, the secondary? No, at the very end, right before the research data slide?
Keep going forward, Edward.
May I observe also that safety and a sense of belonging is, is linked to absenteeism and suspensions?
Correct. So when you take out certain.
Right.
Words, this is another example.
So at the, on the secondary survey, which is a little different from the elementary survey, unfortunately, that's my opinion, we have a response that they can choose that's neither agree nor disagree. And that kind of is, doesn't give us any information, right? We really, on a survey, would like you to go one way or the other. But this is the way this particular survey is designed. So what you see on the left side of each is the number when you include that. When you pull that out and you recalculate, that's the number that you see there. So if you take out the students who neither agree nor disagree, it, it moves that number up to eighty-seven percent. So it's two different ways to look at it.
Right. When you take that word out, you're forcing students to make a decision. In some cases, they're saying, hey, I don't care. So, so I think you're spot-on that the schools need to do a better job and we need to do a better job as a system. But I think it's really more important to look at when it says the, the latter, you know, neither agree, you know. When you force the students to make a decision, the, the numbers are much more positive. But the other part is, there are issues in particular schools where you might have four pathways doing, hitting out of the ballpark and a fifth pathway not. So with the data that Kristi will be sharing with you in a, in a minute on the research tools, the schools have the ability to look on not only academic side of the pathways, but also on the climate side of the pathways, which is really, really important.
I would look forward in the future to report on pathways and addressing the issues that we just had.
And I think it's interesting, or will be curious in that, in that work, Mr. Meyer, is getting pathways to do that work, but then also walking that very fine line of not wanting pathways to be exclusive. And so on our bigger campuses, when we are geographically placing pathways in certain buildings on certain parts of campus, making sure we're still honoring that we all belong to the whole and that we're still responsible to each other and not, we just hang with the folks in our pathway and being really intentional in those, how we set up those pathways, those potential pathway buildings or sections of campus, so that they don't become exclusive and don't kind of exploit the worst parts of it. I know in the past, we have, you know, people make assumptions about different pathways at different schools for different reasons. But as we try to do this inclusivity work, that we not drill down too far within a pathway or too far within one segment of a school, so that it becomes, this pathway is really good at it and this pathway isn't. And so we're, we're putting exclusions in there that were unintended. But I know it's super difficult work and it's a fine line to walk. So I appreciate people being conscious of that.
Yeah, as a part of that, Board Member Kerr, I appreciate you framing it in that way. There are these other nuances, right? And that's why these surveys can be hit or miss, all right? Depending on how you ask the question, what words you leave out and/or how the question is framed. The sense of belonging, you know, data that CFJ put out around students not being asked by an adult all day, how are you doing today, right? That doesn't mean it's just a school adult.
Or to be called by their first name.
Correct, uh, correct.
Correctly pronounced.
There, there's that piece of it. But then there's also the peer piece of sense of belong, of belonging. So all of the nuances there have an impact in these responses, yeah.
And I, I mean, I would just add that a lot of our, well, not a lot, all of our schools have been focused on Understanding Six and this idea of creating relationships. And I know that a lot of the work around that, it can really start to show up in the data as we move through time. So even, even safety is gonna sometimes boil down to relationships. Do you have somebody that you can talk to? Because we're all gonna feel safer when we have a strong relationship with someone. So I know that a lot, that we're doing a lot of the work and it doesn't always show up in the big, big giant data pile. But our schools are all happy to share with you the, the kinds of things they're doing and the really hard work that they're putting in. And you're right, I would add one other thing. It depends on when the survey is given, right? So it literally, it depends on what happened the day before the survey. Sometimes can change the entire results, at least at the school site level. All right. All right.
You know, and if I can just stop you before we move on further, that knowledge and fairness of rules, I, I'm kind of wondering what the disconnect is, because our teachers, the ser-, the teachers surveyed are saying that they're not as familiar with the knowledge or fairness of rules, and our kids are saying they're more aware of it. How can the kids be more aware than the teachers? Who's making the rules? And why are, are the teachers not aware of those rules and?
That's a really long, kind of complicated conversation, but I think a good, short answer is, sometimes when we pay a lot of attention to something, we put it in front of the kids, where, I know a lot of our middle schools are really working hard to make sure that we, we know what's expected to us, of us in our common areas, and we know what's expected in classrooms. And when they put that out there, that the kids say, oh, yes, I know, I'm learning it, and as we put it out in front of the adults, they're thinking, hm, I don't think, he's not acting like he knows it. So, I think it's a, it comes down to a perceptions thing. So, the more you talk about something, sometimes it'll increase the metric around it, and other times, it tends to decrease the metric around it. It's just sort of the nature of those perception survey questions. We, and we see it, we'll see it in other areas too. So, but yeah. But there's also a lot more really interesting conversations around that that we could have. All right. But in, in winding down, let's finish off this culture-climate subgroup in our secondary survey. So, we're seeing really similar trends as elementary. There's not much difference, there's not much difference in the, in the groups. So, it means that it's kind of holding from one level to the other. The only exception that I could find was, there does seem to be a slight widening of the gap in sense of belonging for our African-American subgroup from elementary to secondary. But when you look at special education, for example, while it holds low across the board, it remains low across the board. So, it doesn't take a dive at secondary, it just sort of remains at the same rates. But again, very similar trends, and a lot of data for us to unpack together as a system. Okay. So, with that, I am going to just shift gears and take a moment to do a quick infomercial on a couple of things that we're doing in the research office, and then I'm going to have Robert kind of close us off on LCAP. So, let's talk about the data dashboard. Chris mentioned it, and really, what you need to know is, this is a living, breathing thing. I know you got a, a great in-depth presentation from Dr. Lund, I think it was last March, and just know that it's up and running and alive. And we were able to listen to our staff, who said to us, it's not helpful to look at zeros at the beginning of the year, meaning there's no data because the year is over, right? And the dashboard is designed to show us exactly what's happening at this moment. So, we're able to transition it to an incoming student data dashboard. So, right now, schools can look at their incoming students, principals and assistant principals can drill down to see teacher-level data. This is, again, incoming students. Teachers can look right now and plan for their incoming students in a very quick and flexible way. When they click on each of those graphs, it drills down to individual student names. So, it's a really helpful tool for teachers right now. I just want to say thank you to our data and tech teams, especially under the leadership of Hamina Lalani, are in charge of our data team, and Mark Powers in charge of the tech team, because their work has just been amazing. So, once the fall gets started, it's going to switch back to being a dashboard and showing us the real time. So, the attendance that we'll see right now is last year's attendance, but then it's going to shift up to this year's attendance, as an example. Something else, I want to just say congratulations to Dr. Lund. He spent some time on a little project around Chromebooks and Internet, and essentially, he partnered up with Human IT, and they were able to provide 503 subscriptions for low-cost Internet, and 439 families received Chromebooks. And so, you see one of those happy recipients there in the, in the photo. And I know we're continuing that partnership and additional partnerships. I know there's one coming up right now with T-Mobile, that I believe Matt Woods is working on with Ron, and so I think we're going to continue to be able to provide more and greater access to our families, to take advantage of all that's available when they have that access. And then, this is, this is just the, the most fun story. So, when I arrived in research, already there were these wonderful summer interns. And so, they came from high school, there were five of them, and they worked on creating a website for middle school students, so that high school choice process wouldn't be so daunting. So, listening to parents and kids, they told us, it is just hard. It's hard, you know, navigating all these different websites, it's hard looking at all these different things. It's overwhelming, I think is the word a lot of them use. But now, and, and what you see there is a screenshot, that's a screenshot of the page that they'll be able to go to, and when they click on any of the schools, what they've done is they've created a place where every school, it's the same information, and it looks exactly the same. Because if you go to each school's website, it, you know, navigate, every, every school has their own website, as they should, but not when you're just trying to find information and you are in middle school. So, this is something that they worked really hard on, they did it, and this is something about our kids. So, they were finished in no time. Like, they, this was supposed to be weeks and weeks and weeks, and the, the speed at which they could do this kind of work is just really mind-boggling. So, it just tells you about the potential of these kids that we're working with. So, we can't wait to have more interns come in and, and work with us. So, I really want to say thank you to Victoria Flores in our office, and she's probably a name you're going to hear over the years to come. She did an amazing job supervising the interns, working with them. And then, lastly, we're going to come back to these in a minute. I would be remiss if I wasn't very clear about the work that was done. I'm merely standing up here, talking about the work that was done by others. So, first of all, I want to say thank you to Chris Lund, because the presentation was based off of his previous work. I want to thank my colleague, Robert Tagorta, because he partnered with me, and we kind of jumped together to figure out this sort of LCAP meshing. But really, the people who spent the bulk of their time on this, I want to give a huge shout-out to Hamina Lalani, who leads our data team, and her data team, Matt Riker, Victoria Flores, Mary Ann Grossvanner, and then Kevin Chilato from our testing unit, he leads our testing unit, he helped us with data, and Jana Charpentier, who is with our tech team. So, an amazing group of people who worked really, really hard to put all this together. So, I want to give them a public thank you. And I'm going to ask Robert to come back up now and sort of take you through a little summary.
Thanks again to the board for your patience throughout the, something like 900 slide, feels like 900 slides, but it's more like 90 slides, 100 slides. But to try to distill all of the conversations we've had, which was, which has been a rich conversation over the past couple of days, and two, one or two slides is nearly impossible. But I think I wanted to just start with today's slides, and note that, in terms of our CSU readiness, we discussed this, we met that goal of 2%, that we've been meeting that goal for the past four, five years. There are some, some mixed results around college enrollment, which we discussed, and the nuances around that, and then some, as well, around attendance and chronic absenteeism. With the survey results more or less stable, with the suspension rate, there, there are some signs there that we need to pay closer attention to, but we're still similar to the state average. And some highlights from the past two days' worth of presentations. Our ELA growth, going back to the very first slide that we saw yesterday, that goal was met. For math, that goal was met. The subgroup data, there were some, some subgroups that, that we need to pay very close attention to, so that's something for us to monitor. The EL redesignation rate was, was also met, as well as the percentage meeting ELA standards among our EL and ARFAB students. Although, as Dr. Cale mentioned yesterday in great detail, we have to really pay attention to the totality of the performance of that group, because it's a very difficult one for us to try to grapple with and understand. And then, some successes around the A through G completion rate hitting our 60% target, and the CSU readiness also hitting the 60% metric. For goals to monitor, it includes our subgroup goals, to ensure that we continue to stay focused on closing the achievement gap. The nuances vary depending on the issue at hand, but there, you know, our African-American students, while they're continuing to do well, we need to make sure that they continue to stay on track with, with, with a variety of different metrics, with our Hispanic subgroup, our EL subgroup, homeless and foster youth saw significant gains this year, but we also need to make sure that they stay on track, as well as our special education students. They saw some significant gains in a variety of different metrics. But those are goals to monitor for us, because the achievement gap is so important for us to try to narrow. And then, specific metrics, chronic absenteeism, we saw, we saw that as being one for us to really pay close attention to, particularly as it relates to the middle school level, because it can have an effect on the high school readiness. So, that's, that's one area where some metrics can have an effect on others, and for us to make sure that we continue to pay very close attention to it. Over the next couple of months, I and the rest of the team will continue to have this conversation with our stakeholders, with our parent groups, and, and with, with our school sites, to ensure that we hold ourselves accountable to the data that, that we've just shared with the Board of Education. We'll make a point of sharing your feedback with others as well. And thank you very much for all of your attention and, and support.
Robert, our, our overwhelming thanks to you and Kristi for the presentation today, and such a rich presentation. I think everybody here enjoyed getting the information that we heard from you today. Thank you so very much. Okay. We had on our agenda.
Are we going to do any more questions or comments?
Okay. I thought you had all your.
You know, I'm never done, Dr. Lund, and that's me.
Go right here. Go right here.
So, I'll just highlight sort of the last couple pieces, and it's more around sort of being cognizant on, on how we discuss then our interventions and/or targeted strategies. So, I'm, I'll highlight one group here, because it is concerning that we have a connection, at least from what the data shows. Well, actually, before I say that, I want to express how appreciative I am that our district is comfortable with highlighting things that we're awesome at, but, you know, just that we are also very conscientious about those areas that we could, we need improvement. And so, let me, let me start with that. And, and it's coming in the spirit of, of that. You know, we all expressed it, but, but, but I want to sort of be very concrete about it. And the concern is this. There obviously is a connection here, I'll highlight our African-American students, between African-American students' perspectives on safety, their sense of belonging, and chronic absenteeism, and our suspension rate. There's, there's no way around it, no matter how we look at the data, it's very clear. So, I think the starting point for me is looking across strategies and targeted sort of interventions, you know, getting a better sense of what we're doing as a district, because, because we do have a sense of different support programs, different sort of targeted strategies. But in this case, you know, there, there, it's, it's hard to steer away from sort of illustrated examples and get like that holistic, like, hey, this is a big concern, right? I'm not even talking about academic performance, but these are all tied into our academic performance. Especially since we are experiencing really good growth in our African-American college eligibility, right? But it seems to be sort of this polarized spectrum, that African-American students are telling us, they have big concerns in terms of their sense of belonging, in terms of their perspectives on safety. The data shows that they're high, they're, you know, they're one of the highest groups in terms of their chronic absenteeism, and, you know, in some cases, five times higher, and others 10 times higher, likelier to be suspended than our, than our, all our other groups. So, I just wanted to emphasize that in closing, you know, all the great stuff that we're doing is, is, is great to talk about, but we, we do have this, you know, subgroup here that is being impacted in different ways by all the great work that we're doing.
Any other comments?
Thanks, Dr. Lund.
Thank you, Robert. Kristi, very much.
I do need a break.
Okay. I was going to ask, I was going to ask if the board, the board, if they wanted to take a break or move forward. Okay. Break? 10-minute break.